Our May 19th, 2020 city council meeting minutes. I guess not minutes. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. Consistent with Governor Inslee's orders 20-28 dated March 24th, 2020, and the continuation of his stay at home, stay healthy directive, all public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for the council to consider. We will also provide two opportunities for the public to make comments. Joining me in the council chambers are myself, Mayor Brickner, City Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Dan Swinton, Police Chief Brian Asmus, Operations and Maintenance Jennifer Camp, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, Lisa Keyes, Director of Planning and Engineering, Jocelyn Reddell, Library, and IT Support Todd Henderson. Todd will be the manager of the Zoom meeting. I will be taking a roll call once we get to that point in the agenda. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment. When that time comes, I will acknowledge I will acknowledge public participation for up to three minutes. For the record, please let me know your name and if you are a city resident or not. To participate on Zoom, the public can so indicate by choosing the chat feature if they would like to make a comment. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it's time except for the council and the individuals in the room. So the first item on the agenda is an invocation. In lieu of the invocation, today at the city council meeting, I wanted to take a moment of silence, if you will, for Rudy, that passed away, one of our staff member, Rudy Torres. Excellent, excellent individual through and through. We are going to be discussing some of the things we're going to be working on in honor of him. But today, I just wanted to take a moment of silence if you'll join me in honoring Rudy. Okay. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we will do roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Mike Kennedy.
Motion, we have everybody in attendance?
Yes. Is there a second on that?
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay. And I will acknowledge that I can see everybody on the screen with Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy, Councilmember Forrester, Councilmember Receivers, Councilmember Dunn, Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Langford, and Councilmember Comiscius. Okay. Next, so all in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed? Okay. Agenda approval.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Langford. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Not hearing any? Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to our first opportunity for citizen comments. We have two to be read into the record from Ann.
To City Council and Mayor, my daughter is a doctor at Belly Hospital and has been very busy over the last two months. She was supposed to travel to Hawaii this month with her family to visit my other daughter who lives there and celebrate her birthday, but the coronavirus ended those plans. She never once complained about how much she was working or how disappointed she was if the visit had to be canceled. To make up for this a little, we had a Hawaiian themed party for her at my house on Saturday, May 16th. I contacted LLPD Chief Frank Asmus earlier in the week and asked if it was possible for the LLPD to do a drive-by shout out. On Saturday morning, I received a call from the LLPD saying two officers would be by at 4:00 PM as long as something else was going on. After my daughter, her family, and her in-laws arrived, we found an excuse to be out in the front yard at 4:00 PM. LLPD Officers Matt McKay and Jordan Bowman had tires and lights on briefly and were followed by Mayor Shane Brickner and Chief Frank Asmus and his wife Carol in their personal vehicle. Officer McKay and Bowman gave dim blue line slides to my two grandsons, who were speechless for a change. And Mayor Brickner presented my daughter with a few items of city memorabilia. The chief's wife had a happy birthday homemade drawing tape to the side of their car, which they gave to my daughter. To say that this act of kindness made the day very special is an understatement. My daughter was very surprised. I cannot thank Officers McKay and Bowman, Chief Asmus and Carol, and Mayor Brickner enough for taking the time to come by and celebrate with us. It's just one more of the many ways that Liberty Lake is a special community and one of which I am proud to be a part. Sincerely, Holly Woodruff, President of Liberty Lake. I have a second comment here to City Councilmembers. A few months ago, the Friends of Liberty Lake Municipal Library voted on a motion to take $16,000 of accumulated donations for the use of a library need that was identified in the library needs assessment. Director Jocelyn Reddell and her staff have decided on new shelving for the children's book and researched to find the best shelving within the donated budget. We Friends are excited to purchase these shelves for the library and we support your acceptance of this donation. Thank you very much, Holly Woodruff, President, Friends of Liberty Lake Municipal Library.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Are there any other citizens that would like to make a comment? If so, please hit your chat button or hit the raise your hand button, and we will try to acknowledge you. If it works. I see Mark playing with his computer a lot. I'm not sure if he's trying to hit the mute button or not. Nope, he's not, okay. All right, not hearing any. We will move on to Mayor and Council reports. Any council reports?
This is Dan, I'll take that one to start.
Go ahead.
The Liberty Lake Kiwanis had a board meeting this week to discuss the scholarship applications that we've received for the current annual scholarship foundation drive that we present. And we're honored to be able to recognize a total of 14 students in our community and the amount of greater than $9,000. The names and the amounts will be coming forth in a meeting shortly, but it's probably our biggest effort as a group and our contribution to the community to recognize the youth and the children and the students of the community to go forward in education and to, I'd say, yeah, step out into the world. So it was really a great experience. I'd share that for me to be able to read through scholarship applications from the students of our community, particularly those adversely affected by the cut short of the school year, was really motivational. It kind of gives me hope for the future, so to speak, to see and understand more about the students that, you know, these are our leaders of the future. So that was, that was kind of fun. I'd shift gears a little bit and offer a personal observation in a public service announcement and say that I am one of the lucky 32 people in Spokane County to be the victim of identity theft and a false unemployment claim. So I'm enjoying all the trappings that go along with that, frozen credit and police reporting, and important activities that go along with it. I'll just be very clear, be careful out there and respond immediately when you are detected, detecting that there is fraudulent activity. You know, for me personally, I'd share the HR team and my current work environment contacts me on Tuesday of last week and says, you know, to the best of our ability, you're still employed. And I said, yes, that's my thought too. And then I, that was Tuesday. And on Saturday morning, in my postal mail, I got to open up a debit, a new debit card from an account in a bank in Florida that I've never been to. So I'll just say that acts quickly to freeze, freeze credit is an option to everyone at no cost. And it takes less than 10 minutes on a phone to each one of the three, I'd say, recognized credit reporting agencies. And I also want to draw attention to a fourth that's emerging named Inovis. So in case you memorized Experian, TransUnion, and Equifax, Inovis is out there too. So, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, sorry to hear that, Dan. That's unfortunate.
Question?
What a pain.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Hey, Dan, did you have any idea how they breached you?
Well, you know, it's really, it's fun, Mike, to have the, all the credible power of the Washington Trust Bank's information security and operational risk management team on your side. And I'd report that they quickly were able to reveal that me and every one of my personal details was available on the internet for about $5. And that the actions taken, yeah, I mean, to be direct, don't be, don't be thinking that you are secure. I'll say, really, it's like, if you're, if, you know, Experian, you know, the breaches that have come out in history, it's out there. And, you know, it'll happen. But it's just a matter of your mitigations and your personal strategies in response. And so that's the important part.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Dan. We just, Anita just posted on our Facebook page about Avista and some groups that are getting very good at taking advantage of people up to and including coming to your house with full Avista gear. If they start to talk to you about your late bill, things like that, it's fraudulent because they would never come to your house and do that. But they're making phone calls under Avista, make it look like Avista, as well as driving around in vehicles with the Avista logos. So that is on our Facebook as a warning to all as well. So thank you, Dan. Any other council reports? Okay. Not hearing any. I will move on to my reports. So as you know, or may not know, we had put a request in to Governor Inslee for the Spokane County area to be opened up earlier in the phase process. With that, he initially had turned it down within less than 24 hours. But apparently, he decided to take a second look at it, which he did so, and has agreed to let Spokane County move into Phase Two once they adjust some of the health requirements from the Health District. Spokane, Spokane County are working aggressively on that overnight to hopefully have that into them by tomorrow for Governor Inslee to finalize and approve. They would like to get that done for this weekend, obviously, with Memorial Day coming up and it being a three-day weekend. So we're, we're working very aggressively on that piece to make sure that that can get done as swiftly as possible. When you look at the Phase Two process, it opens up a little bit more opportunity-wise for some of our local businesses, but still has quite a few restrictions. As an example, when you look at the restaurants, I believe it was 25% capacity. There was some other things on there as well, actually. Katie, can you hand me that? Katie has it right here. So moving into Phase Two, it would be continue to stay, stay home, stay healthy order. Outdoor recreation involved fewer than five people outside from your household, i.e. camping, beaches, gathering with no more than five people outside of your household per week. Good luck tracking that one. Essential travel and limited non-essential travel for Phase One and Two permissible activities to include remaining of manufacturing efforts, additional construction phases, in-home domestic services to include manning and house cleaning, retail in-store purchases allowed with restrictions, real estate, professional service, office-based businesses. Telework remains strongly encouraged. Hair and nail salons, as well as barbers, can now open in Phase Two. Pet grooming and restaurants with fewer than 50% capacity with a table size of no more than five. And one of the things that I talked to some of the other mayors about was if you look at the timeline breakdowns for where we would be at Phase Two without Governor Inslee's support of us moving to Phase Two, we would have been there next week around the 25th anyway. So in light of that, I had put together a letter that I sent to Governor Inslee telling a good story about our city, talking about how close we are in relation to Idaho, our population of 11,000 and change, how we've only had seven cases, of which we haven't had more cases than seven in, over about three weeks. I talk about how we're a newer city. And being a newer city, we have a lot of newer businesses that are family-owned, where these businesses have just started out or just starting to get their feet planted on some solid ground. And this is the exact thing that could devastate them. We've seen a lot of businesses in Spokane, really staples in Spokane City. From when I was growing up, I remember them still being there, that have shut their doors permanently. And our goal and my ask to Governor Inslee was that he look at our city as its own entity, separate from the county, having a feeling that he was going to put us at Phase Two anyway, and requested that based on our cases per capita, based on our location and how close it is to Idaho, that he let us move into Phase Three within the first week of June. I have not heard a response back as of yet, but I checked with his representative on this side of the state, Adam, and he was looking into it for me. This is something that's critical for our businesses and something that I know we can do as a community. And it's going to take a lot of support and guidance with these restaurants to meet some of the requirements that they're going to have. I think it's also important to note that while the orders are in place, we are encouraging people to take appropriate measures, especially if you feel that you're vulnerable or susceptible to getting this. But at the same time, our local law enforcement will not be out actively enforcing this and pursuing people. Ours is going to be, our response is going to be similar to Spokane County, which is to educate and guide. So with that, we also, through the efforts of Chief Katie and the other directors, we have put together F and Q to help answer and guide a lot of these local businesses as to some of the requirements that will be in place or some of the commonly asked questions that they may have for being able to get their doors opened up. We will also be sharing some of the information and guidelines from the state on, for the restaurants, so they kind of know what they need to do. But we're still fighting for our city in particular, and I ask Governor Inslee to look at cities and use ours as a trial, really, for cities that are 15,000 or less in population that have had cases as low as we have. I think we have a good argument to see, to try to make that happen. So we'll see how he responds. The other section, we're still working on the Liberty Lake Together messaging. We ask that if you can, you share that. We made sure that for any council members that would like them, you can pop into my office when you get a chance and down on the floor in a box there are window cleans for your car windows, if you like one of those, or magnets for your cars, if you like that, or just a printout to put at your window at your house. So those are in my office if you would like to come get one. The school districts, PTSA changed their sign on the fence at the school there to say Liberty Lake Together as well. And I have gone around and spoken to a lot of the businesses who are putting their Liberty Lake Together sign in their windows for their businesses. So we've seen a lot of great support with that piece as well. I'm going to make sure that you guys get a chance to see the letter that I sent to Governor Inslee. And we're going to post it so our citizens know where, kind of where we're at and what our request is as well. So we'll get that shared here shortly to you guys. Any questions from the council up to this point? Okay. Not hearing any. We will move on to the City Administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a fairly long report, but I'm going to go fairly quickly. And if there's any questions, indicate with chat or I'll pause at the end. The first part is-
Actually, sorry, before you start, I did want to say, we also, the Parks and Art Committee had a Zoom meeting as well. A lot of the conversation was based around events and activities. I did want to touch upon that. And the funding available for different events. We had a good conversation with them with some clarification of why we're doing what we're doing, how we're doing it, what got us to where we are with the financial numbers, interacting with the local businesses on what kind of loss they were seeing, and some of the tough choices that we had to make on some of the events we've had to cancel. They did ask if they were able to pursue events like the electrical box wraps where they can get money donated from different organizations, if they could still continue on with those. And we said we didn't see any challenges with that as long as they could head it up, because we are short-staffed because we hadn't hired as many seasonals this year. But as far as like the Fourth of July fireworks, we haven't made a firm decision on that as of yet. We're kind of waiting to see how Governor Inslee responds and what direction we want to go with that. And then obviously, some of the other events, like Barefoot in the Park, that would be a very scaled-down version for that event. The Symphony, Bob was on the phone for the Parks and Art, and they still plan on doing the Symphony as of right now. They haven't heard anything any different from them as of yet. Talking with the group that puts on the Liberty Lake, Right Above the Lake fireworks, as well as the Fourth of July parade, they are postponing those events and looking at later dates to coincide with our other events like Barefoot in the Park or the Symphony, which might be a really cool end of the summer where they do a parade still. We have the Symphony that night and fireworks that night. That's the date that they are looking at the strongest, so. That's it.
Shane, what date was that?
The Symphony is September Labor Day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so our council meeting on May 7th, there were five things that came up that we're tracking and want to get back to council on. The first was pedestrian crossing design status update. And Lisa's managing this right now. We're at about 50% in a month. We should be at 100%. And at that time, she's going to bring it back to you so that the council can give us direction on how they want to proceed. If you recall, dollars were allocated. We use those dollars to scope out, design, and estimate several pedestrian crossings around town. And so we'll be bringing that back to you for direction on that step. Financial reports, those are the infamous green and yellow sheets. RJ sends those out, so you should have copies of those. 2020 permit activities and certificate of occupancy. We thought we would hold off till the end of May so that we could capture the current month. And so Lisa will be giving you an update on June 2nd with where we are year-to-date and some of the activities that have happened since COVID-19. Solar system over at the Police Department and the library, we've had a consultant go over there, look at our system. They tell us we have a good system. They need to do some assessment. And so Chief Asmus is overseeing that effort and will bring back information on what, if anything, we need to do to maintain the solar system that we have, as well as its ability to manage backup power in an emergency situation. And then finally, there was a question related to scraps. Does animal repeat offenders, when they pay their fines, do those offset city costs? The answer is no. However, when pets are licensed in Liberty Lake, that license fee does offset our costs. And I think Liberty Lake has a really good track record of licensing our pets. And that goes a long way in keeping our monthly cost to scrap lower than some other communities. So with that, I'm going to jump over to Harvard and Henry and just give you guys a quick update. Harvard's Road is what I call crunch time right now. We have to get all of our documents to WashDOT by tomorrow. And Lisa and I are doing that minute by minute. We think we're going to make it. We're very optimistic that they're going to have everything they need so that this Friday, they can submit a funding request package to the state. I will say that, and WashDOT reminds me every time I talk to them, that all state funding is at risk at this point in time. So I'm passing that on. But we've done everything that we need to do to get it in their hands. So hopefully, we'll keep you posted if we hear anything else. Henry Road Design is moving along well. The Geotech is complete, the survey is complete. They're looking at some details with additional rideaway designated, some of the signals that are due to be designed, a whole host of things. What I wanted to let you all know is that probably in the middle of June, we will be at 30%. We will have an estimate, so we'll know where we are and where we stand with the design budget. And we will also know the footprint and the profile of the structure so that we'll be able to share it with all of you and our community as well. I think it'll be very interesting at Harvard's Market, a whole host of places for us to show the community what this structure is going to look like and how it's going to work. So that's a quick update on Harvard and Henry. And then also, just I want to remind the council, Barker Road Roundabout at McTellvo and at Broadway, which is on the north and south side of I-90, is at Adright now. And they're still hoping that that project is going to go to construction this year. That project, as all of you know, is in Spokane Valley. So now I'm going to move on to the Coronavirus-19 update. A few things that I'm going to update you on, then Chief Asmus and RJ's going to step in. And this is really a group effort. I think every director spends a tremendous amount of their time managing some of the programs, the requirements, so on and so forth. And I do want to mention too, Jen's crew has been very active in managing the activities associated with keeping our facilities clean. So when that day comes, when we can open our doors, we have protocols in place that provide the best practices related to disinfection and cleaning. So on that note, I was going to mention the CARE Act funding. So this is kind of good news. It is $330,000 that is earmarked for Liberty Lake, up to that amount. It is a reimbursable contract. And it's, there's several, well, there's five criteria that we have to satisfy in order to be reimbursed for this kind of activity. We can't use it for anything special or already budgeted or filling gaps. We can use it for COVID-related expenses, including staff, purchases of supplies, a whole host of things. So RJ and I have been very active with MRSC, listening to what the protocol is. This is managed by the Department of Commerce. And this week, we should get an email from them letting us know what steps we have to take to secure those funding. It will be a contract that we will hope to have in front of you on June 2nd. So this is a contract between the City of Liberty Lake and the Department of Commerce for the use of these funds for appropriate purposes. The other thing, and the mayor talked about the phased openings and the permission that we received to apply for Phase Two status. We are already talking about phased openings in a little bit. Jocelyn is going to give you an update on the library and some of the services that they're looking at. But I wanted to let the council know that internally, all of our directors are really assessing how we can continue moving forward with the requirements, answering questions of our employees, answering questions of the public, of the developers, of contractors. And a lot of hours are spent going over and making sure that the steps we take, we are taking are with safety in mind. With that, Mayor mentioned the FAQs for the city, and we want your feedback on that. I think Chief Asmus sent it to you earlier today. If you have any other questions that you think our community has- If you have any other questions that you think our community has or any other suggestions, we'd love for you to provide a feedback. Our goal is to get it out by the end of the week and post it online. So Chief Assis, do you want to, do you have a camera over there?
No.
Oh, you can leave that.
They don't need to see.
No, you're okay.
Be short. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just a public safety update on the COVID-19 issue. First and foremost, our policy group, when it first started, we were working seven days a week, went down to five days a week. Currently at three days a week, and now they're talking about maybe making that policy group one day a week. So we are thankful that our time can be spent doing some other things. So we're excited about that. But part of that is because the Emergency Coordination Center is now in the demobilization process, which basically means all these entities that were working together in one building are now working on going back to their home agencies and will be operating still with this as their primary focus, but it'll be doing it so from their home agency as opposed to at the Incident Command Center. We're also now moving into a recovery mode at the ECC. So we're looking at the longer-term 36 to 90-day strategic plan on recovery. From a complaint standpoint, we've only received one additional complaint about the business that was not following the governor's orders. So that is, that's been resolved, by the way. That is good, that that number went from dozens a week to one every other week. And RJ and I will be meeting, having a phone conference with FEMA on Thursday to discuss what funding options may be available to the city related to COVID-19. And then finally, not directly related, but to Councilmember Dennis' point, because of the employment security issues, in Liberty Lake, just last weekend, we had 32 complaints come in about the fraud and identity thefts of the unemployment claims. And that was just within that weekend in Liberty Lake. And over the last couple of weeks, it's probably at 45 or 50. But just this last weekend, for whatever reason, we had the run on those. And so again, just to be right, please be careful. There's a website on the employment security that you can go to to determine if you have been, your identity's been reached or been used for an unemployment claim. So we encourage all our residents to please do that.
Real quick on that, Dan, I recall doing this quite a while back where I'd put a protection on my social security number, in essence, which you brought up. And I know it was for around 90 days or so. Do you recall if you have to have had an incident to do that? I don't remember to trigger that ability.
The quickest thing a consumer can do is what's called freeze with credit reporting agencies. And what this refers to is it precludes anyone from making what's called a hard pull on a credit report. And that's what is traditionally used or necessary to open up credit accounts. So a freeze, as it's called, actually doesn't have an expire or a time limit. You are handed a PIN number or other, to be able to recontact those agencies to release that freeze in the event that you'd like to open a line of credit or purchase a vehicle or something like that. I have listened and watched many who have participated and actually done this even outside of identity circumstances. It's just a reasonable and a sound approach, given that you aren't somebody who just needs to regularly open up new lines of credit. So my recommendation is, yeah, for everyone to consider that carefully. If you are not needing to regularly and without, you know, in an ad hoc circumstance, open up or make large purchases involving credit inquiry, freeze is free. And yeah, seems to be fairly effective.
Thank you. All right, RJ.
Yeah, just to piggyback the Employment Security Department, we have had past employees and a couple of current employees that have issues with this as well. So we shared with all of employees today, contact information on employee security, department's website, plus other couple pieces for them to get ahold of. And just be aware that this is going out there and it affects a few of our employees as well. And I did have my identity stolen earlier this year too, so it's not a fun process to have it thrown. Luckily, I don't need to open a lot of accounts like which is exactly the process that comes when we're done and through.
RJ?
Yeah.
I have a question, please. Is there any site that we can post to the city website for people to go to so they can check their credit or put a freeze on as Dan was talking about?
We can post what we shared to the employees that have that link so that they can go to do those steps.
I think that would be appreciated, so thank you.
So I don't have too much to share. It is kind of hard to wait to validate some of the projections, reductions that we're thinking are going to happen. I did send out last week, laying on the property taxes, what we collected, we're about 8% down. So that is due to the extension of what taxes are due for property, which is June 15th. So we do expect a couple more larger collections that are out of the normal. And we'll have to wait till July 10th to see exactly how much in property tax we collected for that first half. But we would expect it to somewhere between that 96% to 99% collection. If they haven't paid by June 15th, unless there's some kind of extension by the state or county treasurer, it would be considered in arrears. The sales pass, the next round of data comes out here next week. That'll be actually for March sales. So we'll get to start seeing the impact that COVID has had on restaurants, but also see what the effect has when it comes to purchasing at supermarkets, Home Depot, online purchases with Amazon. So we're anxiously waiting. And then June, late June is really kind of our first view that we'll get of how different businesses are doing here in Liberty Lake because of April, when a lot of the businesses were affected.
Real quick on that piece, in my efforts to go and speak with as many businesses as I can, a lot of the restaurants, while they're grateful that they can have things delivered or curbside pickup, a lot of them still expressed that they were down about 75% to 80% in revenue, which is why it's going to be imperative that we try to get to that Phase 3 process sooner and as safely as possible.
And to the last item that I have just mentioned, the golf courses in Liberty Lake get opened here a couple of weeks ago. Talking with a golf pro, he has seen steady play. He just, they were able to up to foursomes this last, just this week. Before that, it was just twosomes. And while I said, you know, it's a little different, people were playing longer throughout the day. So they're usually in that one or two o'clock. Sometimes they get a lull that just stayed steady for them. And it sounds like the other two golf courses are operating kind of same platforms. But I haven't been any issues. They've been able to get people in and out fairly safely and securely, so.
Okay, so moving along, on tonight's agenda is a contract with Centennial to do Pavilion Park Irrigation System Replacement. You may recall, we have built, did this project several times. It's always come in much higher than budget. It's very competitive out there. We receive different bids. The funding for this project is from REIT. And I know in the past, we've spent a lot of staff time repairing the 25-plus-year-old system up there. So we're kind of hoping that if this was to be approved, that we could move quickly on it. And also that it would offset some of the staff time fixing repairs up there on a regular basis.
And I will say, in regards to that, when we had people bid on that project, I think maybe because of COVID and the lack of work, we saw probably the lowest bid that we've seen in quite a while. So that helped in regards to that, for sure.
Also, some of you were, well, I think all of you were CC'd on a request from a citizen regarding our flag and putting it at half map to honor and staff people that have been impacted by COVID. And there's been a lot of information back and forth. And I had a conversation or two with the individual that made the request. What I wanted the council to know is that there is some, a little bit of confusion out there between MRSC and then this federal flag code requirement. MRSC kind of admitted that they weren't the experts necessarily on this subject. And so in conversation with the person that made the request, she's going to pursue, I think, a request for the state of Washington to do something through the governor's office. So at this time, we're not going to be following up on that request. There is flag flying protocols, and we just needed to make double sure that we were following those protocols. Jen did all the research, so if you have questions, she can answer questions. She's becoming an expert on that. And then finally, but now moving to the library update, Jocelyn's going to take my seat and give you an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a quick update for you. We have been continuing to do online programming for people. We are getting ready for summer reading, which is going to be mainly online or take activity stores. Don't have to be doing any in-person programming this summer at the library unless things change significantly. But meanwhile, we are happy to announce that tomorrow, we are starting our contactless hold pickup service. So people can go online or call us to place holds. They'll receive a notification when it's available. And then when they come to the parking lot, they will give us a call. We will check the materials out and take them outside to them. We'll be doing that Monday through Friday, 10 to 4, and Saturday, 10 to 3, but not on Memorial Day because we closed for that. And just a little bit of background too, we're following all the health and safety guidelines that we are supposed to, following the CDC and Spokane Regional Health District things, including wearing masks when we're working with materials and quarantining anything that's returned for at least 72 hours. So and then the one other thing is on the agenda later, we've got donation approval for some shelving. We've not ordered it yet. We wanted to wait to get it approved first before we order. And that would be to meet an ADA issue that was noted in our library needs assessment last year. And then children's room, people who have mobility issues are not able to adequately see all of the books. And so we found a type of shelving that we feel is going to be pretty awesome. And we're pretty excited about it. So we're hopeful that you will approve.
And I do want to give, recognize, with all you guys here, recognize Jocelyn and her team's efforts. They did an amazing job on putting together a game plan to be able to do the curbside pickup and kind of looking at future plans for when the library opens up to maintain that safety and clean atmosphere. We presented it to Dr. Lutz. He made a few recommendations, but he was happy with what they had put together. So kudos to Jocelyn and her team at the library for doing such a good job on that.
Thank you. That would be the end of my little report unless you have any questions. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so to wrap things up, we still have events close through the end of May. City Hall and the library will be closed on Monday, May 25th for Memorial Day. And then Farmer's Market has a plan, a very detailed plan, to open on June 6th. And so at the June 2nd council meeting, we'll be looking for a volunteer to staff the city's table. We're thinking we have one councilperson, Mayor Brickner, and then maybe one staff person. That's kind of what we're thinking. And we would also have our tent and awning, if you will, so that the community can come in recognizing social distances and look at the mask that we have on the side of our candidate. So we also are putting together some material with Liberty Lake Together, frequently asked questions, and a whole host of other things that we can share with our community at the time.
And just to coordinate efforts on that, if you do have an interest in being at the Farmer's Market, can you coordinate that with Jen on what weekend you would like to be there? So we don't have any overlap of too many people there.
And I believe Jen is on nine to one. Okay, we'll be running nine to one, so we can probably do shifts.
Yes, Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for that June 6th.
All right, and then for the other ones, just for the other dates, just please coordinate that with Jen. And I did want to, before we move on through the other items, we did have a good chance, Lisa and I have both talked to Rudy's family. They're at a point now where we can start sharing all the great stories that we had about Rudy and what he meant to the city. So Anita has put together a really great collage, if you will, thank you, of Rudy and some comments from some different people that had worked with him out in the field or a city hall. I had also contacted The Splash. And while I have a little piece for The Splash, they are going to do a larger story on him for the July article that comes out. The June one was a little too tight on their deadline in relation to honoring his family's wishes. We also plan on when we can have our all-staff barbecue, having it as a day of honoring Rudy and remembering him and sharing all the fun stories that we have about him. So that is where we're at. Any council questions for Katie or anybody else that has presented so far? And I can't see all your hands, so I'll just have you speak up. I do see council member, actually Mayor Proton Kennedy, you have.
I do, Katie, under a CARE Act funding of $330,000, is that from state or federal?
Federal.
Federal, thank you.
Yeah, it's federal treasury, I believe.
Yeah, it's, so it is, the origination is a federal, is indirect grant to the state. And the state Department of Commerce is the one that is overseeing how it gets dispersed to all the cities and counties in Washington.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Just real quick on the Farmer's Market, and I'll shoot Jen a note on this too. I think if, the closer we get to confirming June 6th, it might be a good idea to pull out those tents and let those maps hang for a while. They've been folded up for a very, very long time. And they might not look so great the first time we put them up since they've been folded for so long.
And I will say too, if you do have an interest in sharing or splitting the day up, if one council member wants to coordinate with Kennedy on splitting that day up, that way we can give everybody an ability to be there. There will be, we will do some prep work with those that will be there, especially because I'm sure we're going to be getting a lot of questions in relation to COVID, how the city is responding and things to that effect, which is why I want to make sure that I'm there for the first few ones at least. So we'll kind of coordinate that as we get further, closer to it. Okay, before we go to consent agenda, I know that Councilmember Kamiskas had a comment or question?
Yeah, I can just go ahead and do that before we get to the vouchers. Just in the, in the spirit of transparency, I know there's a voucher in there for former council member Bob Moore's utility tax rebate. I didn't even realize it was on there until today. I was not involved in the process by any means, so I just wanted to disclose that. It won't make any difference to me on voting for or against the vouchers. But I just wanted to put that out there just in case anybody had any questions.
Fair enough. Any other comments or questions up to this point before we get into? Annie has a comment. She's on mute.
I, hopefully, I'm not muted now. I had a question. RJ had sent out our list that breaks out by funding area, the capital facilities priorities. I think I'm saying that right or wrong. But the list to break out of all the different priorities by funding area. And I was wondering when we're going to, or if we're going to, talk about those. And they were all broken out for this year. But I know given last week, two weeks ago, how we voted, are we going to talk about those? Are they still all on for this year? How does that work? That right there.
So this, Annie, this is Katie. So those are items that we can certainly talk at a retreat, or might be better to wait till we have an in-person meeting where we can talk about it as we attend the council meetings. So that would probably be mid-July, something like that.
I think one of them that we're wanting action on tonight is on the irrigation project, which is part of the refund and its number, part number 81, now that it says Pavilion Park Improvement. So the total budget in there is 265, which the irrigation portion of it by itself was just 250,000. So I guess that is the one item that we're looking for action tonight. The other one that we haven't taken action, we can talk about in July, some of them are not moving on. But like example would be the concert chamber recording hardware. I mean, it's here. We've been putting it together so we can live stream and use Granicus and Agenda Center here. So will we all be together again hopefully by the first meeting in July? And then there's some other programs that we are in action on. So it would be, I don't know if it would be helpful if we took this list and updated the ones that have just not even started.
Yes, we could do that. Why don't, we could bring back an update at our next council meeting and go over this. Also on that council meeting is our PR presentation improvement program for the council to consider. We'll give you an update on these as well. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I think as we're voting on some things for funding, I'm kind of wondering how, where we're at with some of these things and wanting to be cautious, you know, given what we've been talking about with budgets and everything too. So and loss of revenue.
Yep. Great comment. Okay, we are at consent agenda. Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda one, motion to approve May 5th, 2020, city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Got a second? Was that from councilmember Severs or done?
Severs.
Okay, thank you. For the record, that was Severs. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Next one.
Consent agenda two, motion to approve May 19, 2020 vouchers of the amount of $556,639.53.
Second.
Second.
Second from councilmember Kamiskas. Any comments or questions on the vouchers? Beyond what we already heard. Okay, with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. General business number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute agreement with Continental Contractors, Inc. for the Pavilion Park Irrigation System Upgrade in the amount of $174,488.29 with a 10% contingency to be managed by staff.
Second.
Second.
You got a second? I believe that was from councilmember Severs.
Yep.
Discussion.
Yes, question. When it says manage by staff, normally would the, would the, our engineer monitor that? If not, who will be monitoring that?
That will be our ground crew. I believe it's through Jen.
Through Jen?
Yes, through Jen.
Very good, thank you.
Katie?
Yes.
This is Odin. I noticed in review of the documents that it's, one of the points that interested me was that we're really talking about $194,000 because of the contingency. So we put a dollar amount to that for that 10%. Second, I noticed that they're not scheduled to start the work until September. However, there's a clause in there that says they may start anytime they want to. Can you clarify which one it is, whether it be whenever they want to or in September? And also, if it is September, will we be expending the funds prior to the actual start of work? Because that gives us several months of cushion.
So I'm going to try to answer, and then Lisa's going to help me out. So when we did this contract originally, we always thought that it should be a fall contract because of the activity in the park during the summer. So it's not ideal to be putting in an irrigation system in the fall, in the summer. The preferred time is in the fall. We just go back to school. However, this is not a normal year. And so we attract contractors to be interested in our project. We want to give them the flexibility. And I believe the start date does need to be coordinated with the city. But Lisa, go ahead and help me out here.
Yes, so it was our intention that we would negotiate with the contractor related to the start date, given the fact that, that the parks are less utilized right now. So we will certainly encourage that to get it, to get it moving. And your other question was?
The 10% contingency, we, that is a dollar amount. It's 10% of the contract.
It is a dollar amount, but it would require a change order for anything to be, for anything to be in excess of the bid amount.
Yes, the only thing I'd, go ahead, Odin.
No, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say in relation to coordinating with them and their start dates, obviously, we will want to be cognizant of some of the events in August and September. Councilmember Langford.
That's it, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you. So as I look at these quotes, what do we have here, two, four, six of them? There is a large range, the high number being 446, the low number being 174, and the others somewhere in between. Most of the others are well north of 300. Is there any, do you have any idea or any reason why it would be such a widespread for this, for this work?
So this is my, Mr. Mindy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mindy, that it has to do with the fact that people are anxious. The last two times that we took this out, we got really high bids because everybody was busy, super busy. And I think it may be a function of recoveries.
I'd like to add too, it's a very competitive market out there. So a lot of the times we bid one bidder, twice what our engineer's estimate was. It's a very competitive market. That's part one. Two, we added flexibility. And I think it has to do with the contractor's ability to put, bring their crew back on and get a large, for a landscape company, this is a large project. And so the company that bid on it that was low has very good credentials. And they were interested in giving us a very competitive price. So why did they bid the way they did? I don't know. But we bid this project several times. I want to say at least three. And other times, we were at $500,000 for the exact same scope. So to answer your question, councilmember Foyer, I think it's the competitiveness of the market and the availability of the contractor to get some work under their belt. They weren't sure that their crews would be busy.
And Jen, remind me, Continentals, they're some, they have some great reputation from, yeah, Greenstone uses them all the time for their work. They're the main group that Greenstone uses.
And to be honest with you, Phil, I don't know how many, they tend not to bid on public work. They tend to do private work.
When there's a, yeah. So from the highest bidder to the lowest bidder, there's a $272,000 difference. It just, in the back of my mind, I wonder what's not included. Is the scope of work the exact same for all of them? I'm assuming it is, but that's just a big number to me.
Yes, it is.
Katie? May I just ask a question that I'm not familiar with, and you can shed some light on it? Do the work that is bid by local entities, are, do they come with any type of guarantees? Or do they come with something that says, we'll take care of it for the next 10 years if something screwed up or whatever?
General guarantees are the bid bond. There is also warranty. The warranty on this project is one year. That's standard for irrigation systems. And generally, our crews that take care of our irrigation system are actually managing the field inspections. So that's a good thing. And, but generally on this kind of contract, councilmember Langford, it's a one-year warranty. We have bid bonds. And then we also have, they have insurance and all the liability requirements. We also, so that you know, in managing these projects, we withhold 10%. It's called a reserve. We hold that back until they pay all their bills and they successfully completed the project. And then we execute a release of the, it's called retention. And we hold that back until we're completely 100% satisfied with their work. And then it's released at that point in time.
Thank you.
Council, Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Just a comment further on what Phil's question is, comment, not a question. It blows my mind that, I mean, as long as I've been in business, and in the good times, the bad times, and I get bid from contractors, in the bad times, there can be a little bit less that you're going to pay because they're anxious to get the business. The thing that blows my mind is because, what happens because we're a city, that if we get bids, they're 100% higher than what this is. And it's so low is that they're going to perform the same service as somebody who would charge $500,000. There's a hell of a lot of profit obviously padded in here. And why is it that just because we're a city, that when times are good, that the gene pool is so narrow with contractors that they can come in with these exorbitant, exorbitant prices? I mean, I think that's important for us as a council to keep this in mind as we move forward on bids. I really, as a city, I think we get taken advantage of. And that means the citizens are taken advantage of.
Yeah, so there's kind of this world of public work, and not all contractors want to do public work. There is a lot of extra steps that you have to do as far as paperwork, certified payroll, bid bond, guarantees, warranties, progress payments. I'm not going to try to justify it. But the contractors that do public work, they, because it's a competitive market, cities can, it's advantageous to the city to bid in a competitive market. That's part one. The other thing is in Spokane, the construction season for public work is so narrow. So we only have like six months when you can do road irrigation work. Maybe in a grid, you might get an extra month or two at either end of the construction season. But not residential construction, but public work construction, it's a small window. And if you bid it at the end of that window, you're going to pay a premium because the contractors are busy, the good contractors are busy. So I understand the concern. I do. I think the best strategy that cities can have to get the best price is to provide the right timing, bid in a competitive market, and give contractors the flexibility to do the work. Because if you're very, if you start dictating the schedule, you'll pay a premium for that work. So don't get me started. I'm sorry. I love this kind of word, but anyway, I think in Spokane, you have to have a strategy when you bid. And you want to hit the timing when you'll get the most competitive bids. And generally for world work, that's going to be in the fall. You're going to bid that towards the end of the year, the first part of the year, for work the next spring. So if you don't do that, you tend to pay a premium.
Thank you for your comments, Katie.
Any other comments from the council on this specific topic? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to general number two.
General business two, motion to accept the donation of $15,410 worth of Estee Pitcher Book shelving provided by the Friends of Liberty Lake Library.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Kennedy.
I would just like to say that Friends of, Friends of Liberty Lake Library is very, very close to me. And, you know, Betty works diligently with that, and they have great volunteers that are there on it. I really want to compliment these people that put all this time and effort forward. They put a lot of hours in to raise this type of money to be able to provide us with this additional funds. And to be able to get $15,410 for these pitcher book things, I think is just absolutely outstanding. In every opportunity I get, I try to compliment the great work that they do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comment?
I would just echo that I'm grateful for the volunteers in our community and the time and the energy that they commit and the results that they deliver for the, for the people in our community. It's great.
Yes.
Councilmember Langford.
Just same echo from this point. Thank you very much for all that you do.
Any further comments? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. General business number three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve task order for Parametrics to provide an on-call city engineer service in the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
Who is that second? Councilmember Severs? Okay, thank you. Discussion.
This is Dan. Just, is there a particular objective within this $20,000 task order? A description of the action?
Yes. So with, they could see in our city engineer position, we need engineering support for civil plan, most of our other PAPL projects are handled through other contracts, but the civil plans associated with development are something that we desperately need support on in this short term.
Great, thank you.
Two questions, please.
Councilmember Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is how long is this contract for?
It's an open-ended contract, and the intent is to keep them on until we have onboarded a new city engineer.
So I'm sure you don't mean to imply that this $20,000 could be spent in one week or 60 days or two years?
No, that is, that is correct, sir. This on-call, the on-call contract that this task order is issued under expires December 31st of this year. And again, the work, the work is not open-ended in that the work needs to be assigned directly by me.
The second question that I had would be, the, and I guess this is for Sean, that the form says $20,000, but it's marked in the hourly box. And I don't know if they just didn't have another place to put it or what, but I don't want any confusions about what we're paying.
If I may, there's, there is a hourly schedule associated with it. It is a time and materials contract.
And Lisa, on the development side, is it reimbursable? So they spend dollars?
No, it's not, because our permit fees have been set to cover the engineering costs. So in this particular case, it's not. So we do have, we do a similar contract with Parametrics as it relates to the surveyors' review of things. But the surveyor is, that is actually a faster cost.
Just to make sure we got all the bases covered from councilmember Langford's statement. Sean, did you have anything to say in regards to his comment?
I wasn't, Odin, I wasn't concerned about the contract. And obviously, the dollar figure is not to exceed. And so it will be managed by task order. figure is not to exceed. And so it will be managed by task orders as a particular project or need is required. So I I don't have concern for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate.
Any further comment from the council? Not hearing any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to resolution. Ann?
Resolution number 20-272, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake accepting the Country Vista Corridor Technical Memorandum.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Motion to approve resolution number 20-272.
Second.
Second from councilmember Dunn. Comments?
Does the vote to accept automatically give it our approval?
No, it actually does not. We will be bringing back the full network analysis and corridor study for your adoption at some point in July. However, because the recommendations that are contained in this technical memorandum are feeding into the Henry Road design and are also reflected in the Transportation Improvement Plan, the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, we felt that it was appropriate to at least give you the opportunity to give a nod to the good work.
So in essence, we are saying that we approve it because it's going to be used to support the Henry Road project and another project as well as as far as the transportation. So at this point, we are saying, yes, we actually approve of it. If you have a different idea, please tell me because I I will vote to accept it. However, I have many questions that I'd like to ask and I don't approve at this point.
Um, I'm going to jump in and help. So basically, this report identifies key intersections with improvements at those intersections. But let's say hypothetically that the council decided they didn't want this that intersection, they wanted something else. It doesn't require, it doesn't obligate you to a design. It gives us the direction to move forward with the design, but ultimately, the design will be modified before we issue a contract to construct it.
And similar to to the on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, you may still decide that you want to go a different direction on the planning document. It's it's just a planning document. And but but we wanted to at least give you the opportunity to acknowledge that that or share your concerns if you have significant concerns about the direction that this report is going.
Any other?
Mayor, can I say something? Mayor?
Yes.
Odin, keep in mind that a resolution is just a statement of policy at a particular point in time. So, you know, to the extent that next week you wanted to the council wanted to change their mind and pass a different resolution or move to another step with regard to more detail, you can certainly do that.
I appreciate this, Sean. And I just didn't want staff to start off in one direction thinking that this meant approval of all points and then get disappointed if it should change. That's all, sir.
Sure.
Thank you for hearing.
Any other comments? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Mayor and council, we have four items already scheduled for June 2. The first will be a public hearing on the 2021-2026 Transportation Improvement Plan and then the First Read Ordinance on the same plan. We're hoping to have Rocky Hill fifth edition on the agenda for your approval. And then finally, a contract, which we don't have yet, but the Department of Commerce contract for the COVID care funding that we mentioned earlier in this meeting.
Okay, this is the next opportunity for citizen comments. If you go to your bottom of your screen with your mouse, you'll see a chat button and you can raise your hand if you would like to make a citizen comment at this time. So I will give people the opportunity to do that. Not seeing any. I'll confirm with Todd. We don't have any. Okay. With that, we are going to move to executive session for two topics, consideration to purchase real estate as well as a personnel item. This will take roughly 30 minutes, at which time we will be done with the meeting. Just keep in mind, when you get off of this one, you'll need to click on to the executive session invite for all the council members. Any further comments from the council before we move to executive session? Okay, not hearing any. We will see you guys. We'll be starting the executive session at 8:20 and we'll give ourselves about 30 minutes for that. See you in about four minutes.